I didn't realize it was that heavy. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the regularly-scheduled Wednesday, January 4th, 2017 meeting of the Portland City Council. It's now called to order, and the first order of business is an exciting one. It is... Call the roll.
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Udelay.
Here.
Wheeler. Here. Now can I do it?
Yes, for seven.
Oh, for God's sakes. There you go. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, now we're all here, and we're seriously ready to go. The first order of business is to elect Commissioner Yu Daly, president of the Portland City Council. She'll serve through June of 2017. We already have a second. Do we have a motion?
I have a nominating speech I'd like to read.
Please, a long one, I hope.
No.
Are you nominated?
No, she's already been seconded.
Okay. I think you just nominated her, Mayor.
Perfect. Call the roll.
Fritz.
Hi.
Fish.
I've been on this council for eight years. I have not seen such a brazen power grab in all those eight years. I think, I think she's not been a member, she's in her first minute of service. She's now the deputy of the Disaster Policy Council. That is, that's fast work. Aye, proudly.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Yu Daly.
Do I have a choice?
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Carla, I understand we have a new voting order.
Yes, we do. Uh-huh. It's the first quarter, so we start with position number one, which is Commissioner Fritz.
Terrific, thank you. Our next order of business is communications. Carla, before you call up the first resident for communications, I want to say a few words regarding council proceedings and maintaining decorum. This is council policy. The purpose of the council meetings is to engage with and hear the recommendations from the community on the public's business. In order for us to hear from everyone and give due consideration to matters before the council, we must all endeavor to preserve the order and decorum of these meetings. To make sure that the process is clear for everyone, both those here and those watching on their computers or TVs, we want to quickly review some of the public testimony guidelines. My hope is that these details help everyone to feel comfortable and included in our proceedings, and also ensure that decorum is maintained. During the meeting, there are two opportunities for public participation. The first is the communications, part of the agenda which we're on right now. Communication items are an opportunity to briefly speak about any subjects. These items must be scheduled in advance with the council clerk's office. The second opportunity is the first reading of reports, resolutions, and ordinances. Public testimony of these items must address the matter being considered at the time. Please state your name for the record. We do not require your address. If you're a lobbyist, please disclose that information at the start of your testimony. If you're here representing an organization, please disclose that as well. Individuals have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated at the meeting. When you have 30 seconds left, you'll hear a beep, and a yellow light will flash on the box before you. When your time is up, you'll hear four beeps, and the red light will flash. I'll need you to conclude your testimony at that time, and I'll help you wend your way through that. If you have handouts for us, please give them to the council clerk, and she'll distribute them to the council members. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example shouting or interrupting people's testimony during, or during council deliberations, will obviously not be allowed. If that behavior is seen, this guidance serves as warning that anyone disrupting this proceeding may be escorted from the council chambers and excluded from City Hall. If folks would like to show your support or displeasure for a particular item or comment, please do so with a simple thumbs up exactly, or a thumbs down, and so that no one is disrupted, but we can still see your expression of either approval or disapproval. Carla, could you please call up the first person for communications today?
Yes. Item number one, request of Terry Parker to address council regarding transportation, funding, and equity.
Thank you for attending. If you could give your name for the record, please. And as always, you have three minutes for your testimony.
Terry Parker, Northeast Portland, and congratulations to the new members. I'm going to start out with some facts that are always, are often less than transparent. Public transit on average uses more energy per passenger mile as measured in BTUs, and creates more emissions per passenger mile as measured in CO2 than driving an average car. One-two axle tri-mat bus does as much damage to the streets as 1,200 cars, damage that is paid for by motorists. Transit fares on average cover, only cover 25% of the operating costs. At over 60 cents per passenger mile, transit subsidies are second only to rail passenger service and many times more than the per-passenger-mile subsidies for driving. In Portland, its 20-year transportation system plan, there is well over $800 million of infrastructure cost to accommodate bicycling with no assessed user fees. In addition to state and local gas taxes, federal funding for both transit and bicycle infrastructure is siphoned off of the, from the Highway Trust Fund, which is primarily supported by federal user taxes on fuels that motorists and the trucking industry pay. Over the next 20 years, car trips in the Portland metro area are expected to increase by 49%, regardless of how much mass transit service is added. Congestion is already a well-known problem in Portland and growing. Yet PBOC continues to promote road diets to accommodate bike lanes and add curb extensions that require buses to stop for passengers in travel lanes, both of which reduce motor-vehicle capacity, thereby adding more traffic congestion, more emissions, more cut-through traffic on residential streets than in turn create more safety issues. This promoted agenda has a choking effect on Portland's economy and livability. A modification of direction is needed. To start with, as the primary financial stakeholders that pay for TSP projects, motorists who are overwhelmingly underrepresented on PBOC advisory committees need to have equivalent number of proportionate seats at the table to be in balance with alternative mode representation. At BPS, homeowners need better representation to support the aspiration of re-establishing parking minimums with new multi-unit residential developments when onslaught of residential streets filled with parked cars can be avoided. Motorists must no longer be viewed as cash cow ATMs. Bicyclists need to accept responsibility and pay for the infrastructure they want and utilize. The city council needs to lobby the state legislators to establish a bicycle user fee and/or the authority to establish one locally. Attached is a proposal I developed a couple of years ago that could be used as discussion starting point. Moreover, mass transit needs to become financially self-sustainable. Finally, picking up on what you said this morning, Mayor Wheeler, the city needs to work for everybody. That includes motorists and people that own cars in both homeowners and apartments. And I'm still, would like to meet with you individually, that I've been trying to do for the last year and seem to get sidestep by staff, so I look forward to being able to do that. And you, Mr. Saltzman, too, as the new Transportation Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Number two, request of Jeff Cole to address council regarding Washington High School Community Center. They've requested to read three and four as well.
Very good.
Item three, request of Lyndon Nettikoven to address council regarding Washington High School Community Center property. And item four, request of Mary Ann Schwab to address council regarding Washington High School Community Center memorandum of understanding between Portland Parks and Portland Public Schools.
Great, thank you. And again, if you could state your name for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. I have the urge to say welcome to you also, those of you returning and those of you new. It's very nice to see you all up there. My name is Lyndon Nettikoven, and I am a community advocate and live in the Hospur at Abernathy neighborhood. I'm here speaking for myself, simply as a resident, but at the moment, I am also trying to channel Mary Ann Schwab. We had a carefully orchestrated presentation for nine minutes. Mary Ann has a family emergency, so I've tried to combine our two presentations into one, which will run a little bit longer, if that's okay. I mean, longer than my one would have done. Okay. Okay, I'm here because I care about kids and because I care about people living in cities who don't have a lot of grass and space and places to go. And we've been, we've been looking at needs in our city for a long time in that regard. We build our communities through our kids, both present and future, and when we play together, grow healthier bodies and minds together. And this is a universal truth, and we're demonstrating it here in the slides above me, as we look at slides of our other community centers and see how well we're creating that access and how we're proving that theory, moving it from theory to reality. These truths about the importance of community centers and spaces and connectedness apply to all of us, and really, this is about community. That's the big message. We're all in this, we're all here together. So I want to remind you about an important piece of park infrastructure that is in danger of being forgotten as the years march on, and that is the long-planned Washington High School Community Center. It's a critical piece of this access puzzle. We needed this community center 20 years ago, and now with thousands of new residents moving into the so-called shotgun apartments on the Inner East Side, we need it now more than ever. I talked with members of the CEIC Industrial Council at our land use meeting yesterday afternoon and got their latest stats, and they estimate that there have been 910 new units built in the last two to three years in that area, 693 units under construction, and 1,005 units either in the planning or the BDS permitting phase. And this does not include any of the new development that you see along Burnside, or Stark, or Hawthorne, or Belmont, or Division, or other East Side corridors. These are, this is the area that would be served if we had an inner East Side community center. So we feel that the need is, is great. And want to go back for a moment to kind of reorient ourselves in terms of the history of this project. In 2004, the city of Portland purchased from Portland Public School four and a half acres, a portion of the Washington High School property at southeast Stark and 12th, as a site for a community center and park. This purchase was a key milestone, yet just one step of many, and our project advisory committee spent years wrestling with many aspects of the project, trying to get it right. And there was extensive community involvement. Toward the ends of 2009, the PAC settled on a recommended option, and from there, in 2012, Parks applied for and received a 10-year conditional use permit for the community center's master plan. So that's where we are. We've, it's permitted, it's planned, it's waiting. And although the exact timeline was contingent on available funding, we were talking about Phase One to begin between 2012 and 2015, and Phase Two to be completed by 2022.
And Lyndon, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'll need you to start wrapping up.
Okay. So we're now halfway through the 10-year timeframe, and as Mary Ann says, it's time to bring the shovel to the dirt. We're very concerned also about the additional piece of property shown up here, the 1.31 option, 31 acres, that there is an option to purchase, and we're asking also that council consider that this MOU, which expires this May, be renegotiated with Portland Public Schools, so we could have a longer timeframe to perhaps exercise it. And the thing, we're very interested in asking, it's a please, consider what we're going to do about bonding or funding, or what sources we could use to make this project a reality. And please remember that we're the folks from the Inner East Side that tend to support those levies and bond measures. We're not asking you to just hand something to us. We're ready to work, but we need a path forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have to find my file here, just give me a quick second.
And if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Jeff Cole. This would be the hard part. I live in Sunnyside. My ask today is $60 million to build a community center. Now, I know, given pending cuts to our parks budget, this may seem like asking for the Taj Mahal, or even the moon. We should be asking why. Why, when Portland is building and booming like crazy, are we cutting budgets and services? While we grow and grow, our police force shrinks, our roads crumble, our livability erodes. The fix to this requires a statewide lift, and though Portland may not have this Taj Mahal, we do have Big Pink, now worth 1/3 of $1 billion. This massive appreciation does absolutely nothing for our community's tax base. Thanks to Measure 47, the maximum assessed value of Big Pink is capped at 3% increase per year based on its 1995 value. If Big Pink had been reassessed fully when sold last year, close to $4 million in new annual revenue would have been generated while still complying with Don McIntyre's Measure 5 property tax limits. Even in California, properties are fully assessed when sold. Oregon is the only state not to reassess property when it is sold. The impact on Portland's general budget is huge. Only new construction escapes the 1995-based cap. Local governments cash in big when demolitions are followed by new million-dollar homes. The Big Pink shadow effect throws a long shadow. Bonding is complex, so I'll use a simple loan scenario. We borrow $60 million to fund Washington High School Community Center at 3% interest over 20 years. Annual payments would range near $4 million, commensurate with foregone Big Pink tax revenues. We, the public, invested heavily in downtown. Private interests built Big Pink. Appreciation resulted from this partnership. The community's ability to capture a small share of this windfall, to reinvest in future improvements, is critical. Without a new pool, this nice young woman is down for a very hard landing. The Big Pink effect is widespread. Portland's real estate market is so hot, this phenomenon now happens over months instead of years. At different scales, this phenomenon is playing itself out in just about every Portland neighborhood. So, how to fix this? First, we need a detailed analysis of property tax assessment reform, and then with these results in hand, design incentives to foster support. Portland today relies on an ever-growing list of supplementary taxes and rising fees. New property tax revenues could allow us to repeal or reduce niche taxes or fees, or lower system development charges.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap up. About 20 more seconds. Or lower system development charges, which contribute to higher housing costs, or support local entrepreneurs by reducing business tax rates. Property tax reform needs to be a top priority for Portland's business and community leaders alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I really appreciate that you not only identified the challenge, but also suggested how to get there, so that's very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Item number five, request of Roberta Palmer to address council regarding new revenue sources, specifically a food and beverage tax, and switch from corporate income tax to a gross receipts tax.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
And congratulations on governing this great city to all of you. So my name is Roberta Palmer. Cities face new demands that can only be met with new revenue. Portland's taxes are already skewed toward the property tax, and our federal and state governments rely heavily on the income tax. So consider two new sales taxes. First, a tax on served food and beverages. Portland's food scene is a major tourist draw. Ashland and Yawhats levy 5%. New Hampshire, without a general sales tax, levies 9%. A restaurant bill in LA or Seattle contains about a 10% sales tax. Even at 3%, an F and B tax that is broad-based, including food carts and other venues, can derive serious revenue. The restaurant business is challenging, but this tax is trivial, still leaving room for price increases, not to mention the huge cost of tipping, and it will often be paid by tourists who did not travel to Portland because we have no sales tax. Number two is a tax on gross business sales receipts, or a gross profit tax, to be slightly smaller, in place of the Portland business tax, at least the city's portion. A US business census of 2012 estimated Portland business sales at $76 billion, and that's a long time ago. Even at a 0.3% rate, this tax could double or triple the revenue derived from the present business income tax. No business can operate in Portland without the support the government provides. If business helps devise this tax, it could be a win-win change for the advocates of public services and for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, before we take another item, can we just make sure that we're actually broadcasting? Because we are required to do that. It's blank on our screens, but doesn't necessarily mean it's not being broadcast.
I'll try to find out.
Frankly, that's the best I've looked all day. All right, that is the end of communications. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. It's, these are typically items that don't require any discussion, it's my understanding. Carla, when you get off the phone, that there are two items now that have been pulled, item number six and item number eight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then we will take up the other items with Carla's off the phone.
The TV is working.
The TV is working. Thank you very much. So six and eight have been pulled, so we will take those up at the end of our regular agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what you want, yes.
The beginning of the regular agenda? Good, that works for me. Then with the others, can you call the roll?
Fritz.
Hi.
Fish.
I want to just call out two special appropriations. We'll be having a discussion with the new mayor about whether to keep the special appropriation process, which this last year was $1 million, and a separate committee that reviewed, I think, a total of $6 million of asks. And there are two organizations that are getting special appropriations in our consent agenda. One is Bravo Youth Orchestra, which is expanding their programs at the George Middle School. And the second is the Cascade AIDS Project, which is building a LGBTQ health clinic called the Prism Health Center. And I join with my colleagues in saying what pride I feel that the city is making a contribution towards this important effort. Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Yu Daly.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Hi. All right, now we'll take up the regular agenda. Carla, could you read the first item, which I assume will now be number six from the consent?
Item six, authorize grant agreement with Earth Advantage for $61,000 to fund a deconstruction technician training.
Mr. Charles Johnson pulled this.
If you could just state your name for the record, please. As was once heard in the city of Kaiser, Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson. And we should begin this year with the request that indeed, as this item talks about, deconstruction means stop demolishing Portland. Portland is full of wonderful, usable homes that do not need to be ambushed and attacked by Everett Custom Homes, or Vic Remmers, or anyone else. This particular agenda item is probably inadequate, considering the way the market has been working. We need to have a broader reach to back up our policy supporting deconstruction. So I definitely would love to see you all vote unanimously in favor of six. I want you to all look more seriously at how we're going to keep quality, single-family homes that are affordable, could be affordable, available to average working renters. And the other question, of course, if we're going to spend $61,000 to improve what we do with deconstruction, we have to have a serious public process about how we're going to make deconstruction the preferred option for more and more sites in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Any further testimony on this item? Carla, could you call the roll?
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Yu Daly.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Hi. Next item, please.
Item number eight, accept and appropriate an additional $91,412 from the Oregon Department of Transportation fiscal year 2015-17 Work Zone Enforcement Grant Program for sworn personnel overtime reimbursements. There is someone representing the Police Bureau here, if you have questions.
Good afternoon.
Do we know who pulled it? I was just wondering if we know who pulled this item?
Mr. Walsh.
Sergeant Aaron Smith, Portland Police Bureau Traffic Division. So essentially, this is extra money for the 2015 to 2017 biennium. It goes towards extra patrol in and around the work zone areas, and it's specifically targeted for the driving that happens around those areas to help protect the workers, specifically the construction workers, engineers, flaggers that are working in that area.
Any further council discussion or questions? Carla, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Walsh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, sir. Did you want to testify?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir, thank you. And if you could please state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. Please forgive my voice, because I'm just out of breath. I've been running most of the day, and I don't run really well anymore. The objection to this, and the reason I pulled it, is because of the overtime. We have a great deal of problems with the police getting overtime. If they go to the bathroom, we seem to pay them overtime. About two years ago, I testified at this council that there were 600 people making over $100,000 working for the city, and everybody looked at me like I were nuts. Now it's up to 1,180 people that make over $100,000. When we pulled the information up, we found out that the first 15 out of 25 highest-paid people are cops and fire people. We have one police officer that makes more than the chief of police. How is that possible? He makes $180,000 a year, base pay. He must be working here for 1,000 years to get that kind of money. I mean, if you base it on tenure, how long does he have to work to make more than all of you put, not put together, but all of you individually? Because let me read this. This is a police officer, this is not a sergeant. I'm going to run out of time.
Got a minute.
But I really promised I would be nice.
You've still got a minute left.
Okay, let me just do it off the top of my head. He makes $180,000, but then he made $24,000 in overtime. Okay? Think about that, $24,000 in overtime, and he makes $180,000 a year. A police officer, not a sergeant, not a lieutenant, not a detective, a cop, just a cop, makes more than the chief of police. I want you to investigate why we are paying 1,180 people over $100,000 a year. I would really like to see someone do that. And I know I'm overtime, and I appreciate your patience on this. That's our objection. We really got upset when you put it on the consent agenda, because that's sliding in underneath the table, no discussion. We're going to stop that, and we're going to challenge every one of them. And we did that with Charlie at the last meeting. We challenged almost everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Be careful.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, and extremely appropriately on this item, Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson. And the reason this is important is because before, back on Yom Kippur, when the armed police were throwing people out of the building and pepper spraying them during the back, during the back employees exit, entrance, which was being pushed people out, after Basic Rights Oregon, after the... after the American Civil Liberties Union, after even the Sierra Club had said, "Don't rush into a police contract," we came to the unfortunate situation where we approved the police contract over six months in advance of its expiration. So when Mr. Walsh talks about overtime, this gentleman with the police department who's making over $200,000 a year might be greatly served, I think that money, those overtime funds include when the police association pays Portland police to stand around with their bicycle inside the Apple Store or at City Target. I believe those monies come under the overtime umbrella. The overtime umbrella that covers the $500,000 we spent on policing after the Trump election, but the police didn't prevent what at first was assessed as a half million, a million dollars damage by Chief Marshman, outgoing Chief Marshman, we hope. We can't have people pulling a million dollars in damage out of their hat. But even more critical than this is the fact that just last month, we were talking about two of our fellow Portlanders dying on division. On the east, you know, there is no division in the West. It's only an east side issue. This grant, which of course you need to accept so that we can do everything possible to improve traffic safety, not just for the workers, but for everybody, so obviously we want you to approve this grant, but we want to make sure that when we think about work zone safety, how can we creatively, yet legally use, especially for Commissioner Saltzman, Transportation Commissioner, use work zone and work zone funding to address the most lethal areas where pedestrians, our fellow citizens, are dying? So while we want to respect the workers that are doing the hard work on the street maintenance, you know, they lately have not been the ones that we found dead in the city of Portland. And of course, we would all be remiss talking about the streets if we didn't mention that. Within the last 72 hours, Mark E. Johnson died on Burnside, neglected under a blanket about four blocks from the 102nd Mack Station, as I understand, within 19 blocks of the East Precinct office, where there may be somebody making $200,000 a year to drive by his dead body. That's not protecting and serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
He was 52, by the way. That's 22 years younger than I am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony. Any further council discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
All right, now we're back into the throes of the regular agenda. If we could get Carla to call out the next item, please.
Item 13, authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Safeway Pump Station Upgrade Project Number E10292 for an estimated cost of $1,090,000.
Are there any further questions from the council at this point? Any further public testimony on this item? We don't do testimony on second reads. That makes it even easier. Call the roll, please.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
This pump station is responsible for moving sewage and stormwater runoff from Hayden Island to the Columbia Boulevard wastewater treatment plant. The construction authorized under this ordinance is anticipated to begin in the early summer of 2018, and I want to thank Scott Gibson and Dan Hebert for their good work. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Item 14, authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for the Airport Way One Pump Station Improvements and AW03 Force Main Repair Project Number E10529 for an estimated construction cost of $2,374,000.
Any further council discussion? Call the roll.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
And just a point of clarification, am I supposed to be banging the gavel and celebrating or saying something at the end? We're good.
I would prefer if you don't.
Perfect. Good. We can say, we can even be more efficient then. And we have one more, one final item. If Carla could please read the item for us.
Item 15, authorize Portland Housing Bureau to assume certain contracts that will be assigned to the bureau in connection with acquisition of the Ellington Apartments.
We have, yeah, please, Commissioner Saltzman.
Do we have the presentation? No, this is, there's no presentation unless you have questions, but this is simply last month, the council did authorize the first acquisition under the Affordable Housing Bond Measure, the Ellington Apartments. And so this, this item basically allows the Housing Bureau to assume all the miscellaneous contracts associated with that acquisition. Everything from landscaping services to, well, smoke detectors, all those things, all those services. Kurt Krueger, the Housing Bureau Director, is here if there are questions.
So this is more in the nature of a housekeeping matter?
Yes.
And there's no, there's no liabilities we're being asked to take on that weren't part of the original ordinance? The director is nodding his head, saying no?
I have a question about the contract. So is there a requirement for using minority women in small businesses and trying to use local people? Since we're just giving broad authority to do it, would all of the city's purchasing and contracting rules come into play?
Director Krueger, there.
Mayor, members of council, Kurt Krueger, your Housing Director. As framed by Commissioner Saltzman, the Ellington Apartments is 263 units. The seller is a Palo Alto Limited Liability Company, and we're scheduled to close February 4th. When the seller purchased this property 10 years ago, they entered into a relationship with Guardian Management LLC and Oregon Limited Liability Company owned primarily by Thomas B. Brennikee. And that agreement has been amended and extended for the last 10 years. The Guardian receives 3% of the effective gross income, which is within industry standards. The purpose of this assignment is for the Housing Bureau to ensure that this purchase is a seamless event for the tenants in place at the Ellington. After a period of approximately six months, the property management services will be rebid, and the city's procurement rules, including our social equity expectations, will be part of that procurement. We don't have sufficient time between now and February 4th to do that. So we would extend temporarily Guardian Management. Guardian would be welcome to bid on the new contract, but we will have women in minority, disadvantaged, small business expectations going forward.
So will you bring that bidding process back to the council so that we?
It will be handled by procurement in the normal and customary fashion.
Well, so normal and customary is it comes back to council?
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like this ordinance looks like we're just assigning the Housing Bureau the authority to go ahead and do it.
But we will, we will rebid it, working with Christine Moody at procurement, and it will come back to you in due time.
Thank you.
And we've talked with several, and I'm meeting Friday with Nate Washington, Tony Jones, about the participation of minority contractors in both the landscape maintenance. The units, of course, are turned monthly on vacancies, so there's painting, mining, electrical, plumbing to be done. So we think there's quite a lot of opportunity here to engage small businesses going forward.
Director Krueger, so this is just a bridge to get to?
That's correct. We want to make sure that the tenants in place see this as a seamless experience.
And I also, Mayor, just acknowledge, it's not directly related to this item, but I read this week that the Housing Bureau took action with the yards, the owners of the yards, and the net effect of your intervention is the entire floor that was to be set aside for short-term rentals, that in your judgment conflicted with the terms of the financing, that public financing for that development, has now been reversed. And I think we were all taken aback by the idea that a publicly financed building with affordable units would have short-term rentals baked into it in the way that was proposed. And I was pleased to see that you and Dan not only followed up on that, but were able to reverse that decision and recapture the affordable units. So I want to thank you both for that.
Thank you.
So just one additional detail. It says in the findings that Portland Housing Bureau is going to complete your own solicitation process, but in the directions, it doesn't say anything about coming back to council.
But it is, it will be handled in the normal fashion. It's not an emergency. We will go through city procurement to procure the services of a new property management entity. And so we're using the city procurement officer for that service, and they will use the normal customary procedure.
Would you be comfortable in adding a direction D, that the Housing Bureau will perform a solicitation and return to council by the end of the year?
Commissioner, can I speak to that for a second?
Please.
I'm going to just throw a cautionary flag on that, because I remember during my tenure as Commissioner in charge of the Housing Bureau, that because of the large number of properties that we invested in, and either had direct control over, or we were passive investors, there were just a ton of these kinds of contracts that came up for all kinds of services. There were guidelines and rules established, procurement handled them. I don't recall most of them coming back to council, because if they did, we would be inundated with those kinds of things, because we contract with lots of people to do property management stuff. If the council's desire is to have more oversight over that, maybe upon learning that we are or are not hitting MWE SB goals, I think we should take that up more holistically. And maybe we can do this piecemeal, but I suspect that there'd be a lot of smaller contracting issues, which typically don't come to council, but go through procurement, which might come back to council if we change that, if we make that an official policy.
I appreciate that clarification. This is the first of the bond measure, which we are now going to own as well as hiring people to operate. It takes almost a fifth of the bond measure money. So I would, and I would be concerned if it's going to be setting a precedent that whoever's the property manager, when we buy it, gets to continue to manage it. They could, by all means, but there should be a bidding process.
Would my friend be willing to hold off making the friendly amendment for a couple of weeks since this, the contract, this is a bridge to February?
Correct.
And so that we could have a further briefing by council as to whether this needs to be an across-the-board policy, or just applicable to the housing bond, or for any items above a certain amount? I understand the spirit of what you're saying. I want to, my only cautionary flag is, I would not want to start having all kinds of routine contracts for property management services that change all the time, and have sometimes have very small dollar amounts, coming to council unnecessarily.
I share that concern. This one is a very big purchase, and I just heard the Housing Bureau Director say that that is their intent anyway.
To go through procurement.
It is, indeed. And because the administrative portion of the bond allows for administrative costs to be covered, we've already begun working with Ms. Moody on how we will compensate her for her staff time, because we envision later contracts for other procurement services, including new construction and development purposes.
Well, I heard you say, Director Krueger, that for this one, you are planning to come back to council with a, having done the procurement bid and such?
That was my intent, but I don't have signature authority for these. They go to the city procurement officer, just so you know. I mean, the ultimate procurement contracts are all approved by Ms. Moody.
So then, to clarify, does this ordinance say that Housing Bureau and procurement can amend the Guardian contract to just have it run for the next 10 years without coming back to council?
We won't extend the Guardian contract for 10 years. I see this as a six-month bridge. We have lots of stakeholders that are interested in the social equity implications of the Housing General Obligation Bond, which is the largest bond approved by Portland voters, and we're cognizant of that. So we're going to come back within six months.
Well, then, your word is good for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we take public testimony, are there other council questions while we have the director here?
Well, I would just say that, because I think Commissioner Fritz raises an excellent point. Kurt, we should, at some point, you may want to prompt us with what's the, what's the floor above which you would routinely, you and procurement would come to council? I agree with Commissioner Fritz that as part of the oversight and accountability of the bond, we ought to have council involvement. I also know that there's lots of more routine matters that I would not necessarily think should come to council. So perhaps you could give us some guidance on that.
Be happy to. I think it would be part of our annual report to you on about social equity participation of women, minority, and disadvantaged small businesses.
I appreciate what my colleagues have said, because I certainly, as a new guy here, I'd like some clarification on this, too. It seems like we need a more rigorous standard, particularly for the bond. Further council questions? This is the first reading, so we're going to take public, it's an emergency, but do we take, we take public testimony?
Yes.
Correct? Yes, good. Do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Terry Parker and Mr. Joe Walsh.
And thank you, colleagues, for helping me walk through the Roberts Rules of Order today. I appreciate it.
It's always a team effort.
It is, yes, it is. And I'm grateful for it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you again for the opportunity. I was here on December 7th.
I'm sorry, Terry, could you?
Oh, Terry Parker, I'm sorry. Northeast Portland. I was here on December 2nd, or December 7th, and testified. And because there's a couple of new council members, I just kind of wanted to recap that testimony. And I actually have a couple of copies for you that I'll give to Carla. My house faces houses that back up to the Ellington on the street that's right next to it. And the neighbors were very concerned with as fast as this came up. I knocked on some doors, I spoke with my neighbors, and there were four points that I, I'm not going to read it, but I want to go over. The first point was, we want to make sure that the apartments have zero tolerance for drug, gang affiliation, and a firearms policy in place. Secondly, we want to make sure that the Ellington property is maintained in the current fashion that it's maintained, with the landscaping and the parking lots and that sort of thing. In the past, there have been problems with both maintenance and with the people that are living there, including shootings that were there. I've lived in my house for longer than I care to say, and there have been a lot of problems there. Thirdly, we recommended some sort of a security system up there, possibly a security guard or cameras. And finally, there was a recommendation to have a public meeting with the neighborhoods, people that surround the Ellington Apartments, to, so the neighbors can express their concerns personally, and we recommended that take place at Charles Rice School. And basically, I, that's all in here, and I'll give these two copies to Carla, one for you, Mayor Wheeler, and one for you, Councilman Chloe Udaley.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. We had some questions about when the Housing Bureau goes out and does contracts, we're concerned about that. We're getting emails about the organization, is it TPI that runs most of the homeless under housing? Well, apparently, we're being requested to talk to you about people selling coats. People coming in that need coats, and they can't get them unless they buy them. And there's also a bar system going on about showers and using the washrooms. They have to do some work, and they get credit, you know, like we do in community service, eight-hour service. We call it slave labor. You call it a good deal. We sent letters to housing. We sent letters to TPI. We sent emails to TPI, tried to figure out, because I don't mind getting egg on my face on this stuff, because when I hear it, it gets me so angry, because I just spent two hours, that's why I was late, handing out hand warmers, because it's freezing out there. And somebody is selling coats? Somebody is saying you have to have so many hours of barter because you can't use the washrooms? You can't use, doing your laundry? We donate that stuff. People are out there right now collecting coats and donating, and somebody is selling it, and we don't know? So I'm asking you to do an audit on CCC and TPI. I hate these initials. I really do, because I get confused with all these initials. But the contractors that deal with the homeless people, if they're selling stuff, I want them in jail. I want them hung. I really do. I would waive my opposition to capital punishment. I really would. I get so angry when people take advantage of these things. And when you do these contracts, don't just do them and let them lapse and just go on forever. You have to find out what they're doing. People are dying. We're all broken-hearted about this guy. 52! 52! And people are selling coats, for God's sake. And I know, if you don't get angry over that, I give up. I really give up. Because there's only this much left of life--
Thank you.
--that we fight.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles "Bridge" Crane Johnson, and we're in a very interesting situation now with the Ellington Apartments. In some ways, it's a 180-degree turnaround. You know, prior practice was that people on long-term subsidized stuff that started in the 60s are in Northwest Towers and stuff that's under what was the Housing Authority, not the Housing Bureau, and is now Home Forward. So we're gonna have two different avenues now of providing what's essentially public housing. And whether the Ellington apartments are gonna be financed through people actually receiving Section 8, or whether the feds hate the people-only housing, that the municipalities only housing so much that they can't get Section 8 there, it's a really interesting question. But the most important thing, I think, is that, is that Dante James and the Office of Equity and Human Rights isn't here. Because of course, what I'm doing is I'm sitting, talking to, you know, only one of you in the last year has made less than $70,000. Madam President of the Council has a much more recent affinity for the kind of living that the people in the Ellington Apartments are facing day to day. And when we talk about an equity lens in the city of Portland, that means empowering the Ellington residents and not creating a two-tiered system where Ellington residents are different than Northwest Towers residents and other residents, and having them engage in the quality of their own community. So I hope, since you were bold or foolish or whatever enough to take on the portfolio of the Housing Bureau, Mr. Mayor, that we'll find money and space for that to happen so that even though the city council is technically not responsible for the quality of life for people in Northwest Towers and the other project near where the police killed somebody near Good Sam Hospital about 13 months ago, that in Portland, we'll have the most empowered, most caring low-income tenants, and thus the best neighborhoods. And we'll fairly, and we'll make sure that adequate and reasonable money is available to make that happen. But, you know, this bridge, this particular agenda item needs to pass, but there needs to be, in that time, broad, multi-channel discussions, not just our own City Housing Bureau, but Home Forward, and all those people who cannot find the income-level jobs to live in unsubsidized apartments, which is getting to be more and more people in the city of Portland. And of course, you certainly should not rule out what the Oregon revised statutes allow you to do and see the emergency and work on rent control, and let the 40 city attorneys defend that important and necessary idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you could state your name for the record.
I'm Cedric Wilkins, and I wish to argue a little bit against Joe Walsh. I was homeless for a year, and I was taken in by the TPI, the Bud Clark Commons. I found it was a very resourceful place. You do barter parts for laundry money. It's hard to look for a job if you don't take a shower or something or have clean laundry. If anybody walked into Portland and said they were homeless, need help, I'd refer them to the Bud Clark Commons, and I have. And another resource is the Sisters of the Road Cafe is another place. So if people are trying to do things, I'm just making a reference, like these apartments, people are trying to do something, whether they're selling coats or something, they're just attempting to do something. And we're, we're working forward in Portland, especially when the Bud Clark Commons started. I spent six months in the basement homeless. They got me an apartment under HUD. Lucky I'm over 55. But anyway, these are good things. And I'm sorry, Joe, I tend to disagree with you. Joe Walsh.
Thank you. Is there any further public testimony on this matter? Any further counsel question or discussion? Carla, if you could please call the roll.
Fritz.
It's exciting to be moving forward with this. Congratulations. Aye.
Fish.
Good discussion. And since, Mayor, you've now announced the new Bureau assignments, I want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Saltzman and Director Krueger for a hell of a run last year. And we ended the year with a housing bond that was supported by a strong majority of Portland voters, an inclusionary housing policy which kicks in in February, which is historic and the first acquisition, an innovative acquisition given the timing, but one that I think suggests great things to come of the Ellington, next-door neighbor of Ave Vale Gordley. And I appreciate what Charles said about the different entities, but I'll just close by saying, the person in our community that's desperately seeking an affordable home actually doesn't care whether it's Home Forward, the city, a nonprofit provider, or anyone else. The only thing they care about is it is a clean and safe unit and is affordable. And the housing, in a perfect world, we would not have five different pots of money for these things. We wouldn't have multiple entities. We'd have a basic right to housing, and we would meet it. We don't live in a perfect world, so we do our best. And, and I think, Dan, I particularly appreciate the strong way we closed out last year on the housing agenda. I appreciate your leadership. Aye.
Saltzman.
Hi.
Udaley.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Johnson for his comments, and I agree that it would be wonderful if the residents felt an ownership and felt that they were a part of the community and not a problem to be managed within that community. Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
There being no further business before us, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.